I'll call the meeting to order, would you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the foundation of their God and is just for all.
Thanks everyone for coming. We hope in this meeting that we do some budget work and get that ready so Tiffany can advertise it. But first, we're gonna start with that probation request. So he can either stay or go.
Well, thank you for hearing me, council members. I already submitted my letter, which is like. What I'm asking every county judge, they agree that this will be a back course of action person almost to approach you guys. And discuss the nature or what's requested. So I can either give a brief listing of what's included, or if you guys have any questions, I'll proceed.
Go ahead and give a brief question, if you would.
So, Whitney County, do you have any corrections as well as probation requests from the Indiana Department of Corrections? Grant every single year, and we've been receiving grant funding, I believe, our department back to approximately 2016. Since the 2019, 2020 year, our funding has remained the exact same, two to a dollar, half a percent. So, of course, inevitably, with the cost of benefits increasing as well as pay raises, we were going to, at some point, outgrow the amount that they were funding us. There was actually a recent article on Wayne, how we can create corrections and force investment in the same issues as well there too. So the amount we've always been, or we've always received, has covered all the benefits and salary of two of my officers, my field officer and my higher risk probation officer. High risk meaning, an individual that comes to probation has to complete an Indiana risk assessment survey. So typically, individuals that have an extensive criminal history, potential mental health problems, substance abuse history, so on and so forth. And so, this year, 2025 specifically, is the first year where we will end up with a shortage in regards to the salary fringe of approximately, and my calculations are shown in the letter, of about sixty-six hundred change. So requesting from council, first and foremost.
And when you say they, who's they? Just to, just to clarify, when you say they, who is they?
So I spoke with the judges.
No.
I'm sorry.
When you say they have funded, that's at the same amount?
Oh, the state, the Indiana Department of Corrections, who we were requesting.
Have you reached out to them about this shortage and asked if they would make up the difference?
Absolutely. In fact, I have included here every single year, and timeline wise, it works out in MS. So in April, my grant is due. And then in May, we actually receive our probation officer salary schedule, one that I submit to budget, says what the state has indicated we have to get our probation officers. So, when I submit my request for the grant, I always overguess, because I'm not sure exactly what it's gonna be. So I projected that it was gonna be higher, therefore requested higher funds, as I've done in the last several years, to them, but still receive the same amount. So I have indicated to them a need for additional funding, but have still received the same.
So, the question would be, so what happens next?
Well, that would be a conversation we would obviously need to have again. Now, my two officers that have been funded by this, one does, he has his own insurance, he doesn't receive anything from the county, and the other one is just the employee only. So we are asking at this point for the bare minimum, but you're exactly right, that question. But for 2025, I'm just asking for just the remaining, it's not covered in what we see.
Which is sixty-six, thirty-two, thirteen?
Yeah, the calculations are correct, based on the increase of then.
Any more questions? Brad?
If Sam leaves, you're gonna be even further. Samuel?
No, if Sam leaves, we would have a vacant position, and then that money would, and we probably would have gone over last year, except we had a lapse of time where we didn't have a field officer. So that lapse of time allowed for a lot of money that was able to cover it. But if somebody leaves, we actually have, it's like abundance, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but I mean, since he has his own insurance, if whoever were to take his place, that's a part of the county insurance thing.
Likely, we would have heard somebody had a lower rate, based on Sam's prior experience, so on and so forth. But you're right, there would probably still be a gap there.
Other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion that we give the probation department the sixty-six, thirty-two, thirteen, to finish, this is for 2025.
Correct.
Budget to cover medical expense costs, whatever, insurance, however you want to say it.
What are you paying in?
What are you paying?
No, what are you gonna take, where is that payment coming?
From county general. Sorry, yeah.
I'll second that, unless somebody has a better idea of somebody, someplace else to take it out of.
I have a motion, and a second, that we approve this and take it out of county general. Further discussion?
Has the state told you? Or is there still possibility that they're gonna increase it for you this next year, and you're just using us as your backup plan right now? Is there still a possibility that could get approved, your request to the state?
No, the amount that we've received is after I requested higher amounts. So our grant for 2025 is that hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. But that is after all the requests we've made. I don't know if Paulo can fill in horrendous things, but as far as what every county has been receiving, including the article from Allen County.
And I know you're probably, we weren't involved in the conversation, but when these positions were created and we got these grants for them, was there a discussion with council and then with these employees that it was a grant based from the state position, and that if it wasn't always filled, the position might not be there? Was that ever discussed, or?
I can't attest to what conversations were had with them at that point in time. I did hire Sam, he's aware that this is a grant position, and so he's aware too. So they are aware of that, but as far as what agreements were had when these positions were created, I can't.
It's a very small amount. But next year, it's gonna be higher. And then it's gonna be higher than the year before, and so on and so forth. And where are we gonna go along if the state doesn't increase their funding? That's my concern. I'm probably gonna be in favor of it, because it's a very small amount, but I'm not in favor of the idea. I'm just in favor of maintaining services for that six thousand dollars. Next year, when it's fifty thousand, I don't know that I'm gonna be as enthusiastic. Because that's a hard decision to make.
Well, this is an example of what we always question when we approve those grant positions. We always say, what will happen if that grant goes away? And I agree, this is not a large amount to cover, but it could, maybe next year, they would bump it. But this is a perfect example of what we talk about when we approve these grant positions. This could happen.
Any other comments, questions? Do you have a motion on the floor? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of this request, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next. We have some work to do. I'm gonna kind of turn it over to.
Yeah.
Okay, we might as well just go right down to Tiffany's list. We've all heard what the sheriff wants on merit employees, on salary ordinance. So Tiffany printed out this agenda, so we might as well just start at the top and work our way down. Whether we're going, because we need to vote on every one of them down through there to get this budget done. So, I guess, if you all remember what the sheriff presented to us in the deputies on merit employees' own salary ordinance. You wanna hear it again, or you want discussion on it, or what do you wanna do?
I, to me, an important number is what number are we willing to commit to these requests and these things that we have to decide yet? Along with the budget as it is, that we are pretty much accepting without having discussion about it, the non-issues. But I think it would be important to put together an idea of what number we all agree on is available for us to budget, and to consider all of these requests that are still here, along with the number that we're thinking about giving cost of living increases to our employees. I think that's a underlying factor, that we could go through all of these and not have a full understanding of what we're all willing to use as a bottom line number. I think maybe that number would be more important to calculate and then start going through these things. But that's just a suggestion from me, I'm not trying to hijack the lead.
Well, I think we, I think we need to decide, the sheriff has presented maybe three times, maybe four, on merit ordinance, on whether his request for three new deputies, and so forth. So I, I think we need to, I understand what you're saying to it, but I think we need to kind of address those. But I do think that affects that number you're talking about, whether it's three deputies, one deputy, or no deputies, and so forth. Anybody else have any thoughts? So we'll talk about the merit ordinance that you proposed.
So I was talking to Billy, and he gave me a number with three additional new deputies, around two hundred and seventy-five. I believe that was for the year. So that's with the increases with the new deputies. So that adds over a quarter of a million dollars to our budget.
That spreadsheet that I gave you is numbers of the four hundred and twenty-one thousand would be all of the increases plus free positions.
Okay, so here we go. So four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and minus three cents. That's half a million bucks. That's shooting. Right.
Plus, I didn't include vehicles, stuff like that.
Kids, outfits, and all that kind of stuff, so.
So I guess I'm asking, what do you do, wanna do on the merit side of it? Then I go to the deputy positions, unless you wanna go to that first.
Do we have a half a million dollars in our projected 2025 budget to do this?
In which fund? In his fund, no, we need to also talk about the pension, because he's gonna be in the red. But if you're talking county general, there's absolutely money, but it depends on which fund you're wanting to go with. The way that it is advertised, which I think I told you guys, is at the last meeting, at seven percent numbers in right now, with no new deputies, and the police pension in there, we're gonna be short about a hundred and twenty thousand from LOIT, from its public safety.
Is that taking into consideration the pensions being paid by commissioners?
That's putting the full pension back in there.
Yeah, that's, that's the, we, we start out every year with the pension back in our budget in LOIT, until it comes to budget time to see what we need to move over towards the commissioner's side, what they're willing to pay on their side. So every year, we throw it back, throw it back over on our side, do the numbers who we're at, and then accordingly, the chat, Jason, Rob come up and come up with something.
Could we do a graduated transfer, like half this year, half next year?
Are you talking?
Like, like, so, Chad, you were saying that you guys have traditionally, well, I guess not traditionally, but most recently been paying the pension out of your budget, that's right?
Right.
So what I'm.
The shortfall.
Oh, it's just a shortfall?
I don't think that we've paid it in.
I think, I think you did though, one year. I think a couple of years, for the last two years, they might have at least paid all of it, but the prior years for that, we split it. I think for the prior years before that, LOIT would cover it. But with the raises and cost of increase of living, things like that, LOIT has not changed since 2016, it's remained the same. However, obviously, with the economy, everything else has gone up, so LOIT hasn't trended with anything else, and we're out money. And back when LOIT came, I just, I guess a reminder is, LOIT came in, and immediately, our county general was taken from us. That's where our wages were. So our wages back in county general days before LOIT were county general wages. So our wages were then split out, paid by a tax, and now what we've done is we've maxed out LOIT so much with half the dispatchers, probably fortified jailers, head of communications, and every deputy in LOIT. So as we keep funding that, there's, you know, almost thirty, thirty people with wages in LOIT. And then, plus the pension wasn't.
So to answer your question, some years it was partial, recent years it's been ample.
And then Chad, you sent out an email with that.
Yeah, it was just a thought that I had, just a suggestion, that when, I can come forward since it's a meeting. So it was just a reminder, maybe new information to some who weren't part of council when the tax was passed, but at the time we passed the correctional rehabilitation facilities tax, the LID, twenty percent of those funds could be used for operating expenses. So you, you could potentially shuffle some of your current operating expenses to LID, and then that would free up some funds to accommodate some requests by the sheriff for additional benefits. Obviously, employees are appropriate for operational expenses, but there are some expenses that you have that you could shift and then free up those funds.
You could pay vehicles under that, couldn't you?
I think we'd have that consult probably with state board of commissioners, and see what, what technically is operating expenses.
The part of the goal is to not take it out and see what you.
Right.
Continue to take it out.
Right. So. And we're not, we're not opposed to it. I've never been opposed to helping out with that pension fund, and I don't, I don't think the other commissioners disagree. I think they probably agree with me. We're not against that, it's just not the long-term solution. It would be more appropriate to come up with a solution.
I like your idea. I mean, it makes sense to be able to free up some funds to do, I mean, any help that we can give you guys. I'm, I'm here for it, as long as we can find the money.
Right, I think also, I would just add, because we all are cautious and careful, that it's an income tax. So in the event of a recession, or, or times it doesn't do as well as what it's trending, it's thriving right now. It was projected for in one point seven million when, when passed in 2019. And this year, it's two point three million. So it's gradually increased year over year, but that's not a guarantee.
And I think sheriff's department will still be under pressure to move that budget if we move this to LID or something. And that.
So my email is just, you know, history on the tax and possible solutions on the problems. Appreciate that.
Would part-time employees make a dent at all, Jason? I mean, can you do part-time? Does it make sense?
We actually work part-time for other departments.
Oh.
We cover South Willey and Sherbusco in part-time. So. Yeah, and I think the part-time pay would probably be ridiculous.
Yeah.
To try and pay somebody to get them to come work, because they're not, they don't wanna drop, they're not gonna be earning less than what they already are to compensate, or to take away from their regular job, and then you're asked to spend extra time at another place of employment. So we could have to work our time to do that.
Makes sense.
Jason, you think you can get by with one, until you get settled into the jail to see exactly how much you're gonna need personnel-wise? And then maybe look at, come back, look at it later?
I would ask this regardless of where the move, because the move has nothing to do with this. The move, the, the primary goal is this one, was to try and get to an accounting schedule for what works well, and what benefits, and what attracts candidates and quality people to a department. So the pay plus the schedule, and the personnel request comes from the schedule part. So that's where the twelve-hour schedule is coming from. And that's why the request for people to be added on would be because of that. To, to get that completed, to be able to fulfill those requirements for twelve-hour schedule. Go on there.
But didn't you say at the last meeting, you weren't gonna do the twelve-hour schedules at this time, and it would be implemented later?
Yes, because I can't make that implement, that's not fair to Tiffany's office, I don't think, as far as trying to rush that angry budget time, because there's a lot of policies with PTO allotments and what you're allowed, and I think the rules and stuff for the SOPs would have to be adjusted. We're gonna have to come up with the ordinance drawn up, I'm assuming by Andy, if that was passed for the salary ordinance, or is that something you, is Andy not involved in salary ordinance? Okay, so then she would have to develop that as well. So I think there was a lot of moving parts just for this request, to throw on another office, to try and have also that completed before the end of the year. So I think the goal was, if, if the three were met, is to work into a twelve-hour schedule with their office, to make sure we had all the, in HR, to have all the PTO stuff done. But also, depending on who you get, those people might not be ready for six to eight months anyway. So we can't fill a schedule with somebody in training, because you're also taking your trainer away to train the new person. So you're, you're almost losing one before you gain them, because they're training. And if we didn't have anybody, then there's another sixteen weeks of training at the academy, if we got somebody that was carrying no law enforcement experience. So to say that we could go to twelves is not fair to you guys, that would be truthful, that I could say I can do that, but 2025.
How will this affect PTO, well, how will it affect PTO, you expect it? Tell me about that, can you expand on the PTO just?
It's because when we sat down and, and Billy wants to touch on this, Billy did this schedule in twelve-hour PTO, trying to get with the amount of PTO that people are taking of, heard, as county employees, and that the rate they take it now by plugging them in, it would take three people to be comfortable enough to cover those shifts, where you don't have to double down people, or give them half shifts off and bring them back the next day on a turnaround twelve-hour day. But Billy can speak on that, because he's one of the others. And but that's what, if it calculated, it's three people to make it comfortable, so fill a twelve-hour schedule on that.
And with the three additional people on the night shift, I run a four shift crew and a five shift crew on nights, both day shifts will be four-piece. Reason being, most, the seniority goes to days, you're gonna have more PTO to be used on days, and I'm there to cover shifts, as well as detectives, and even Todd and Jason, if something serious happens. And we can run a three-ship minimum lot, but if you got guys that are one all off at once, we can, we can still run a two-ship. As far as filling the schedule, it'd be a lot easier for me as the scheduler, and, and the guys are gonna, it's gonna have to work together a little better to plan their, their year, their PTO applications, and so forth.
Is this going to create any belt in expenses on additional PTO time, a lot of each officer?
No. We, like, the way it works on the twelve-hour schedule, every pay period, you'll have to take back four hours, take off four hours early, so you don't get into jail. As well, PTO, say the same.
That's on the twelve-hour shift, right?
Correct.
Okay. And when I, when I met with, with you guys, I voiced one of the concerns, and you heard it from Kim, that when you get into jail, are we gonna get two or three requests on different positions there? That, again, puts more pressure on, on this budget, and more people, and so forth. And I think that's one of the concerns of council, is that if we give you three deputies, and then all of a sudden, you come back six months from now, and you ask for two or three more people, because it is a big change, you gotta go to that, that new jail, then, then what does it do? And on an already tight schedule. So. And one of the things we talked about too was, can you increase the hours on the current officers? Because I believe it's about eighteen hundred and thirty hours a year. I don't know how that works with their scheduling. You know, if you get another hundred hours or something from fourteen officers, that's fourteen hundred hours that have to, I don't know, that works the schedule. Plus, they make more money now. Pretty complicated, isn't it? Any questions, discussion? Thoughts?
I think it's needed, but I think, I can't make, I'm not in a position, I'm ready to make a position, or a decision on it, or even positive vote, because I think there's a lot of other issues that we have to decide, can we afford to do other things? And if we break down some of those other things, or if we get through those and see that the funds are available for a full, to fulfill a full request here, then I would be more apt to do that. But I think, as a whole, we gotta look at the whole of the county, I've gotta look at the whole of the county, and some of these other decisions, before I, before I make a decision on three deputies. Sorry, that's just the way I'm here, where I'm at right now.
We need to move this issue to, towards the end of this meeting, and go through the other portions of the budget?
I'm of the same mind. I feel like that's the appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Don, do you have any thoughts on it?
I, I agree, I think we should have launched the rest of the budget and come back to this.
So where do you wanna go now? Increases?
We're gonna skip everything from the sheriff's department, the next one up, according We're gonna skip everything for the Sheriff's Department. The next one up according to what we got. Tiffany is, the judge is supplemental. So what do you want to do with that? We might as well start there and work the rest way down. They've had two in the past. They're asking for five. Is that correct?
Thoughts?
I'm good with two.
So your family is saying?
Yeah.
Need that motion? Unless we got some other discussion.
Oh, I think you can make a motion as time be likes if there's seconds to die. I'll make a motion. We leave the judges at two thousand.
Now a motion from Tom? That we leave it at two thousand? There's several.
Somebody help me understand what this supplemental income is for exactly.
And they want part of their salary?
This is just them, their discretionary, it's just their, it's their compensation, individual compensation. So. Okay. Why is it supplemental? Why is it not just included in their salary?
Salary is set by the state. Their salary is set by the state.
And this is something that we just pay to them as an addition?
Well, second to motion.
And a second by Kim? Again, that we leave supplement the same? Two thousand?
On the budget for the judges, the judges submitted their budget thing, asked for three thousand, so they're not asking.
No, it was five.
Three thousand additional.
One twenty-five. The, um, the person who input the budget for that was not correct. Their letter was correct. I changed it after all the budget books were out. Yes. So that you didn't tell us during the budget meeting.
Any further discussion? I have motion on the floor and second. Hearing none? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion leaving the judges at two thousand dollars, raise your right hand. Pass this unanimously. Okay, one done. Okay. Um. The next, the the tip, and I, I don't know if there's a exact order on this, but was on the maintenance budget. Mark kept a lot of requests, I think a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars request, uh, that he wanted to include in his budget.
We already taken that out.
That's been taken out.
Yes, that is just the projects, which usually you guys look at projects and see, and all of them part of.
You took the truck out?
Yes.
Okay.
Courthouse, museum, annex, oh, just all of them. Okay.
And we need to include twenty twenty-six though, because if we're paying it out of ARPA, don't those funds have to be earmarked by December or was it November?
This was for requests to come out of County General.
Okay.
These aren't ARPA requests.
I would motion we pay this out of ARPA and not County General.
I know that we've got, I think, most of ARPA is earmarked.
Is it?
I believe so.
I thought we still had a few million left from this. Or am I wrong?
There's some, the president's just coming right. He decided to do is pay for insurance. Which comes out of County General, we set the shift that to the American Rescue Plan for that remaining balance. Because we are kind of a little bit of a rush.
Sure.
Uh, the money has to be contractually spent. It doesn't have to be physically spent from the account, but it has to be contractually allocated by the end of this year.
Okay.
So the way to come up with that remainder was just just paying insurance.
Do you know what that balance was off in just in ballpark?
Eight hundred and thirty thousand for the insurance part and then
No, I think you're right. I'm just out of hard time of call, so.
What was the other ARPA request that's come forward? Uh, community correction. Oh, yes, thank you. Community correction.
Yeah.
Just trying to think. Thank you, Kenny.
I'm trying to like go under the chair.
I'll be on there next. Paul had, Paul had presented that information, I think, through email. They had a structural engineer come up to the building and she provided uh, some of the history of the building. Commissioner's will be coming to your next meeting and so.
So just, uh, I've got Mark's budget on on that three hundred and seventy-three thousand courthouse, sixty thousand sidewalks. Finished there for tiny, uh, twenty-two thousand for the annex, thirty-two thousand for the government center, which is the ninety-ten rooftop unit and air conditioning and so forth. That total was fifty-two-five, uh, hundred and thirty-one thousand for the museum. Exterior restoration project, which is a hundred and twenty-one of that. And then the solid waste building. Nine two thousand. For that. That was total. Uh, three hundred and seventy-three thousand just.
That's for twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
And not twenty twenty-six?
Twenty-five. So the question is, do we want to use all all that in the budget or reduce it or?
I think Mark does a good job of looking everything over and giving us a five-year plan. I think he's on a five-year plan, something like that, Chad.
Yeah, he's really good at maintaining.
And every year he's hit it pretty close and knows what we need to do with the our older structures, which would be the courthouse and museum, which we get, we're gonna keep that money in. We need to. So I don't, I don't have a problem with his uh, with his project maintenance, that three seventy-three. I mean, I've been on here five, six years. He's stayed pretty close and we got it all done. So I'm good with it.
Sometimes we forget that we have fourteen buildings.
We have one building that has a lot of maintenance.
Two.
So.
There's a lot of emotional decisions I think that are made though when we talk about the courthouse and the museum because there's no way in God's green earth that a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars makes any sense. Thomas Martin's rule, very great. Knowing that we were just redoing the offsite, I don't know. He probably paid seven thousand dollars to build that.
Exactly. But when when you get to, like John was saying, you're saying, you know, it takes a lot of dollars to maintain that courthouse.
Sure does.
You know, just while we spend a couple hundred thousand this year on on finishing the top forty.
Yeah. Four hundred thousand. Yeah. So.
So I'm, I'm like dumb, you know, you got to.
You have to remember though, that was in a five-year plan. Uh, they did the four sides and then they did the peak or whatever, and that should suffice for twenty to thirty years. So it's not a, it's not an annual expense.
On that.
But then you get wild things like when they're doing that, they find a hole in the roof. You know, so and and that is just a caulking failure and stuff. It's trash.
So Tom, was your form, saving that form of motion?
No, I've made enough motions for a little while.
I can't get on board with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a museum. That's, that's, that's a lot of money.
Thor kind of said, I mean, we're gonna have to keep it up. I mean, if you want some other people in here on to you, Bob, why are you gonna let that museum and that house be down? We've been here forever. I went through the same thing you're going through.
Well, remind council too that that building was not, um, it was neglected, much like the highway department was neglected. Because they, uh, under the previous director, they had budgeted for their own maintenance and their historical society board would would vote on contractors and whatnot and what projects they were going to do. And it was actually once I became commissioner, I had asked Mark because things had been let go, like at the highway department where we had, uh, you know, exhaust for the gas water heater was not red, like, like, had rusted away and insulation was was gone from rodents and whatnot. Like, we just let things go and it's gonna cost a little bit of money to get them back to where they need to be and then not much money to maintain it. But when you let something go for so long, it takes a bigger expense to get it back to what it needs to be.
Is it possible to split? I wish Mark, because Mark's not here. I wonder if it's possible to split the project up over a two-year time span.
I think that's a reasonable request. I think you're on something.
I mean, if we can do sixty this year and sixty next year, that's definitely way less of a hit. Possibly, you know, we could allocate that money towards Jason's request or towards, you know, costly increases, you know, just kind of even things on there.
Some things, uh, that I think Mark does a very, very good job of. There are some things that I wouldn't I wouldn't approve, like the sidewalk project and things like that. But then again, you like, um, if you cut the mower for the new jail, I'm not sure what will be, you know, landscapers out there today. Doing the final grade and they're gonna be putting, putting against the seed and we're gonna have grass. And if we don't have a mower there, that kind of grass. So some of his requests are are absolutely needed.
What was the sidewalks again? Was that widening so we could fit a boom on it? Is that what he said?
Widening for snow level.
Snow. That's, what was the side way project for twenty-two thousand dollars for the annex?
I'm, I'm not sure. I was, Mark is there too. The annex is minor tuck pointing and caulking.
But it's not sidewalk.
No, and if that's for the courthouse, the place east and south radius, twenty south sidewalk, fifty-five thousand.
Maybe we can push that to twenty twenty-six.
The, uh, the money on the museum is adored. It was exterior restoration project, great prime and repaint. Building two coats. So I don't without a project. And a tap where you can do it all at one time.
Why not do vinyl siding?
Then we get to movie service to do that.
I don't, I believe that there's, um, I believe that has to be monitored because it might be lead-based paint. And so the company that will be doing scraping and compliance, make sure that the paint chips aren't left by, I mean, they're caught properly and disposed of properly and I think maybe that's one of the reasons why that's a little bit higher.
Jim, what, what kind of problems would you run into if you took that whole amount out of K-CAP? Yeah.
I mean, that's completely up to you guys.
Yeah, you got over a million dollars.
And that would free up a lot of things everybody's got concerns about.
What part of that?
Pay that all amount out of K-CAP.
That three seventy-three?
And that would free up everything else. That, that's kind of not coming out of common.
Make it subject for prior approval. Maybe then you do it in phases.
That's a good point. I mean, it is buildings.
I don't know. We don't know what next year's request is gonna be.
He's got it on there, doesn't he? Twenty twenty-six?
There's two hundred and fifty that I could, well, there's fifty. There's two hundred thousand.
He has one million four hundred and fifty dollars.
Actually, they replaced the V and S. Fifty-five dollars.
And one. I gotta see, let's go to building, not with that. It's not, that, that ain't there by vehicles.
It's depreciable as vehicle bar.
You have one point one in there.
Motion.
What's?
Authority, I'm gonna say something.
I can answer my own question before I cast it.
Okay.
Come that quick.
I, I look, if I may, just sure, I, I do think it's reasonable, um, a lot of times to remove these projects from the overall budget and have the requests come in the fiscal year and and then address the need for that project at that time. I think a lot of times these projects fall down the budget cycle and once the, once the budget is approved and those funds are allocated, then the department head has the freedom to just move forward and maybe it's something that we should wait to move forward on so they have to come back and ask for that additional. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The only thing I can see on that is by the time they get here in January or February and they start planning, then the summer's gone and they don't get the project.
Yeah.
To get contractors lined up or anything like that, just makes it a little tough. Understand what you're saying.
Conversations we've had in the past with Mark, I would, I would guess that he probably already has contractors lined up for this work potential, work. I would, I would not be surprised. So. And I think that if we tell him that yes, we're gonna move forward with it, but we're ready to do it out of the system, additional appropriation will here and will your part of K-CAP and take it out of that, that he just has to come back to us, but he can still have his contractors in place. I don't, I don't know why, why that would affect that. I agree. That makes sense to me. I'll motion we do it like Thor said. Take it out of K-CAP, have Mark come back for an additional appropriation in twenty twenty-five or late twenty-four to be used in twenty-five. Or would that be? Twenty-five then.
Okay, a motion by Nick.
Well, second.
Second by Kim. Any further discussion?
So you're gonna scratch the three seventy-three now, make him come back in January and ask for additional appropriation.
Correct.
For each project?
Yes.
Each project.
So we know what, what you track.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those who vote the same. Okay. So I think, uh, you have something to do with solid waste budget or anything?
No, they are gonna come before you. Well, you have your, um, you'll look here in September and then we'll adopt both county and October.
Okay, so the budget was approved by the solid waste board.
George, I guess the next, any salaries increase or? Open for discussion.
Before we, I'm just gonna start, just throw this out there for discussion. So before we start talking about cost of living increase, I think it's come to a point in time to where in this, um, discussion started, may have started before I was at Ron Council. But I know it's been part of our discussions every year on where our elected positions, my officials' positions are as far as the auditor, clerk, recorder, treasurer and assessor. This is declining to get involved in those evaluations of those positions. And I think that we've pretty much just taken a stance on, um, it's elected position and, um, it is what it is. But I think the point after a number of years of not showing an increase to those elected positions that we need to address that. I think it's time that we have a meaningful discussion about raising those positions, which what I understand would also affect the chief deputy's positions in each one of those. But, um, I would think that we would, I think we should look at an increase of between four and five thousand dollars in each one of those positions. Before we start talking about, um, cost of living increases for the county as a whole. Okay, I agree.
I'm agreeing to Thor also, but I think we did need to designate which positions they are.
Auditor, clerk, recorder, treasurer, assessor is, is my feelings. That's what I brought up when I just made the suggestion. How did you come up with four or five thousand? Take a page from your book. Well, that is kind of the same vein of where we've fallen behind on cost of living increases where those positions have stayed kind of stagnant with, like jobs in other markets. And I'm throwing that out there as a, as a starting point. I mean, if you, if you're trying to tell me you think there should be more than that, then you're gonna have to convince me. So my thought was somewhere closer than to the six to eight thousand range. Because a six thousand dollar range is only five hundred dollars a month. It's an extra a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. Not a whole lot. Now granted, it's quite a bit more than a four to five percent increase or six percent. But I would suggest we start at the six thousand dollar range.
So are you, you looking at the comparison of other counties on wages?
No, I think that's a trap to look at that.
I do too.
A trap by what you mean like a trap?
I think everybody looks at that from all these counties and says, we're not doing anything. And I think that's been going on for a number of years. That I think it's time for Whitley County to make a statement that we value our people in those positions. Not just the people that are there, but the position itself. We value it. We respect that position and we need to treat it accordingly. So it continues to garner, um, interest in people being in those positions. Those positions are very important to the operations of what we do, decisions that we have to make. And certainly for the health with the county. So I don't know that Whitley County should always just be, okay, this is what Noble County's doing. I think that they should, uh, I think that next time they look and see what we've done, then, then they're, that's, that's gonna be kind of the first tone in the pool, so to speak. So I don't, I don't wanna get caught in that trap of just saying, well, that's, that's what everybody else pays. That's what we're gonna. And I think we need to look at this from analytically and not emotionally. It's very easy to get caught emotionally in, um, putting a hundred and thirty-one dollars into a building that we know is not worth it. Uh, but we get caught emotionally and yeah, we're gonna do it because that's a piece of history. So it's very hard sometimes to have the analytical, uh, view on this and not the emotional view. And I think that we need to be analytical and realize that these positions are very important to the county. They have not been touched in quite some time and that we've got a responsibility, not to the people that are in the positions now, but to the county itself, to make sure that we ensure that these are viable, desired positions for quality people to be in.
Okay. Other comments? Question, comments?
Chad, the other day when you said three percent commissioners recommended a three percent, is that straight across the board or?
Um, I explained to Thomas a little while ago that we were made aware of that state statute that said that commissioners had to make a recommendation. So I didn't like that as, I mean, as a former councilman, I, I felt that it was not really my lane to be in. I don't like that statute. So, um, I didn't even, if you watched the commissioner meeting, I didn't even wanna make a motion. I mean, I thought that it needed to be made. So, uh, point is that, uh, I felt comfortable like we were staying in our lane and if we were recommending a, a three percent like state had done for its position. So that would be, um, three percent across the board for every employee. But, uh, again, I'm very respectful of the fact that I'm a councilman and I believe for, that's a council decision. So. I'll call on my legislator to change that statute.
I respect your train of thought and looking at that three percent, but I think you're being too narrow focused on a one-year three percent. But we have not stayed with what the state has done in the past years. We've fallen well behind that. And I think it's our job and our responsibility at this point to look beyond that three percent. I appreciate where you're coming from and the reasoning that you're using, but I would disagree.
And I think that Joe Personberry did a great job of, uh, tabling out what cost of living allowance and social security increases have been in the past four years. First, what our annual increases were and what support, uh, more than two percent.
Is that a part you're suggesting, the amount in addition to? When we do the annual raise?
My, my idea on the four to five thousand would be that it is too difficult to say five thousand dollars to increase that position. But then they don't get whatever raise we decide on this year because it's a nightmare for a county. So I appreciate what Nick says about six thousand, but I would still say in that four to five thousand range. And then they would get whatever raise that we would decide on too, just because we're not talking about doing a raise here. We're talking about increasing the salary for that position. Then we'll talk about raises. And I don't know, it's, I don't know that I wanna get into the business of sorting out which positions get raises. When we start talking about that, we're talking about doing across the board cost of living.
I'd be in favor of the four thousand dollar across the board increase plus the cost of living increase.
For the five positions, you're talking about the four thousand?
Yes. Cause that puts them closer to that six thousand dollar all-in range anyway, if not a little bit over. So maybe that's a confidence.
Any other comment?
I'm agreeing with Nick and Thor.
These, these fact books are, are published by the county association. And when you compare even population counties bigger than us and smaller than us, it's interesting of what, of what you see. When I look at the, at the package that we present to our employees, it's, it's just not salary for me. It's the benefits that go with it. And when you look at our benefits compared to other counties, that there, it's a nice package that we have for our employees, uh, PTO time that's longer. Of course, being a government entity, more holidays and, and, uh, the taxpayers get, um, a high majority of the taxpayers get. And then there's also one of the big things is we contribute eleven point nine, eleven point two to their per retirement every year. So a person, simple, if, if they make sixty thousand dollars, we contribute sixty-six hundred dollars that is often forgotten into their retirement. It's actually might be more than that. It depends on what they make. So quality health insurance and that. So, so when you look at that package, our, our benefit package, what I see is, is better than virtually all the counties that is out there, uh, in some terms, two to three weeks more of PTO, stuff like that. That, that's quite a benefit. That's one of the reasons that I said a couple of years ago that that benefits package, I mean, sheriff is running into it a little bit. And when you got so many people and they, they reached that different, I think it's, uh, ten years, it's seven point five weeks. That's, that's two months. Uh, at twenty years, it's over two months a year that they're gone, that they've earned. And that puts a strain, what I believe on our county. Then we have, I believe we have to have more employees, which puts more strain. But that's just my thinking on it. I think we have, I think we pay pretty well. Are we at the top? No, we're probably not quite at the top for some of our counties of our size and so forth. Our benefit, I believe, is at the top. And I, when, when I talk to taxpayers and we talk about that, they're, they're really, when, when you tell them the amount of time and that, I mean, compared to the normal taxpayer out here, which it's quite a package that we have. So I look at the whole thing and that's what, how I value.
I agree with what you're saying, um, to a point respectfully though. To attract new talent, to attract the younger generation that's going to fill these positions once these elected officials are retired, retirement age, they're, they're not typically just looking at the benefits package. Speaking from experience, just recently in taking a new position, the first thing that pops off the page is the salary. And then the benefits is the benefits. That's additional. Okay? So I feel that if the additional, uh, PTO time that you referenced, our department heads need to be, I wouldn't say better, but maybe a little more diligent. I can't, I don't even know if I can say that, but just more strategic in how days off are allotted to employees. That way there is no shortfalls and things like that, like you're alluding to. I think that, um, that's a very minimal issue that we have and frankly, pretty easily rectifiable. Um, and I think that, like Thor said, to attract new talent, to, to ensure that we have a continuous pool of available people who want to run for these elected positions, we have to kind of be on the cutting edge of salary, benefits, PTO, all of it as a whole entire package, not just pieces.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. The smaller departments have the ease to, to manage that a little better. The sheriff's got a lot of employees and we have a lot of employees, they have a lot of time and we have a lot more people to try to, to make the system work on that. But, but it's, it's, it's still very costly to us up on the curve and things like that. And that's usually forgotten with that check. That money goes in every year and, and, uh, when they retire, great benefit. And that's when they think of, oh, I'm glad I was in that system and they put that money away every year.
I agree. I completely agree. However, I think we, we need to do what we can do to ensure that we continue to get quality employees and quality elected officials and stuff like that. And I think this is a small piece of a larger puzzle that we can fit together.
Well, if you're gonna give an uptake in the elected official income and then get them the cost of living increase, I think we should do the cost of living increase first to make the determination on the amount. And we should split it. Cause we don't even know what it, we haven't decided on the cost of living percentage yet.
Two separate issues?
I think so.
We determine what the increase should be, plus the code to be determined later?
I think, I'm sorry, there's an interrupt, Tom. I think it's appropriate to decide this first because if we decide we're not doing anything here, then obviously that's gonna be a certain pool of money that's still be available to look at, uh, cost of living increases for all employees. If we do have, uh, come up with a number here, then that's gonna take away from that number. And that's, that's what I was saying with the sheriff's department. Their ask is a lot bigger. But that's why I wanted to try to maybe reverse engineer it to where we, where we come up with a number that we're all comfortable, that we're willing to dedicate towards each one of these issues and then see how we're gonna, how we wanna make that number work and, and apply it to which issues and, and not apply it to which issues. So.
Can you confirm which elected officials will be referring to, which position?
Auditor, clerk, recorder, treasurer, assessor. So if you, if you extrapolate that into the four thousand dollar increase like we're discussing, that's only twenty thousand dollars you're earning here. Plus the cost of living.
Plus per.
Plus per. I mean, it's not an exorbitant amount of money.
Well, we just turned down the judges. Well, the judges.
That's in addition to.
We did just turn that down for different reasons though.
That's, I think that's a separate.
It's much different.
In my opinion, that's separate. I'm gonna make a motion that we increase the auditor, the clerk, the recorder, the treasurer and the assessor by four thousand dollars to their base salary and give them cost of living increase or whatever we decide.
I got a motion from Nick that would give a four thousand dollar increase to those five positions, correct? Plus the cost of living and when we get to that. And Thor seconded, correct? Discussion?
I'm working on the personnel committee for what, almost four years. I can see where we're falling behind on the program. Maybe we are. And there was, the last time it was adjusted, I think it was two thousand nineteen. Am I correct? There hasn't been an adjustment since that two thousand nineteen episode.
You guys have any ideas? One year, eleven?
No, just cost of living.
When was the last time your salary was increased?
I think it was in twenty nineteen, not yet, everybody's.
I'm talking just elected. I'm talking just elected officials.
I have no idea.
They weren't included in that in 2019?
No, we were cut out, we were cut out.
So then that made the difference even more. I, I, I think it should be adjusted. And that's just because I can see it, I can see it making, we're falling. It's going to have to be made adjusted soon. I don't know when, sometime. We're going to end up like we were before I was even on council. I revert back to the 2019 because I looked into that and just trying to understand what I, no, no. Thor might have explained it to him, I'm not sure who did at the time. Because that was huge, it was a huge adjustment. And we're heading towards it again. It's not uncommon for places to make that adjustment, so they can stay in that one.
The thing that was forgotten then, Bill O'Dea told me that was, or George struck it too, that they forgot to factor in per and those kind of things when they did that.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
So how, how are you coming up with just the $4,000? How are you coming up, justifying that?
Well, I just took it as, you know, 4,000 divided that by 12, it's not a lot of money. Add in per, so let's say it's with the cost of living increase, let's just round it up to 6,000, okay? So 11%, not even putting in the point two, you're at $660 additional a year.
But it's just not the elected official that's the taxpayer here.
I agree, I know, I understand that.
So basically you just picked a number out of here?
Yeah, pretty much. There wasn't a real, a lot of thought to that specific number. But it's higher than the cost of living increase is going to be. And again, I feel it's the least we can do. Which that sounded bad, but.
Maybe it's the most we can do.
Something.
So what does that do to deputies, their deputies in the office? Because they, they get so much of that.
And then that's what I addressed, it'll, their chief deputies will have to be compensated appropriately with what we've used as a standard with the WIS recommendations of, what is it, 75%?
Eight-five.
Eight-five percent. That's not part of this proposal and that would be decided at a different point though. That's not just automatic, that's going to have to be better.
But they get 85%.
That's a recommendation from WIS, but that still has to come back through.
It's in the salary ordinance, I mean, obviously you guys can change that at any time, but it's in the ordinance that, in 85% of the elected officials. But again, the salary ordinance is done every year.
It's, it's going to be an automatic. Is that right? Elected officials, is that how that?
If you leave it at 85%, yes.
Okay.
Can I add in that they were also left out in 2019?
What?
They were also left out.
Chief deputies are.
Yeah, I was chief deputy.
So was she.
Any more discussion? I mean, it's been good.
Well, just, I'm still struggling with, it just came up to 4,000 now. You think it should be increased or decreased or? I really don't know. I'm just, I mean, I, I still, I'm, go back to the slack, last sheet and Thor made the comment, you know, that we need to set a standard or precedent. I look at these other counties that are similar to us, that we're paying more than. Is, is, well, I'm struggling.
See, I don't think you can look at the other counties and base what we do just because of what they. I feel like for us to attract people to this county, being an elected official is a desirable position to hold, I guess. We want to grow this county, our mayor has aspirations of revitalizing downtown. I mean, we have more than just, you know, more than just employees to think about, it's the whole county of, we are, we are trying to attract people to this county to live and to work. Obviously that increases our tax base, which is good for, you know, everybody in this room. But I, again, I feel it's something that we should do in the very least for those five individuals. Even though I picked a number out of the, actually it was kind of one by Thor with his four to six, so.
How's from Wheeler, what's your thoughts on?
I don't know. There's no good way.
Are you for or against?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on that shortly. You're gonna, who's that right beside you, you're gonna, oh.
I don't know. I just know that you give them a raise, then you give the deputy 85% of that. It just, where does it end?
Well, for this year right there, I mean, I know we say 85% and it sounds like a big number, but it's not, they're not getting an 85% additional raise. I mean, this is, this is all percentages, it's all based on $4,000. We're not talking huge numbers here, we're not breaking the bank, you know?
No, but we were, we were the last time we had major.
It's true, and that's when we had.
I've been on that.
And that's when we had, and that's when we had about $400,000 in our county jungle. We had to make a lot tougher decisions. I mean, we really did, you know, and that's, and I, and I was there too and I agree with you. And you're exactly right. And we worked hard on that and we were more responsible, I think, as we should have been and had to be to the taxpayer at that point and the general health of the county in general at the expense of our employees. And, and it's gotta be a 50-50. There's going to be taxpayers out there that are going to be, you know, calling me and saying, are you crazy? What are you doing? But they, they're going to get the same discussion from me and I'm going to share the same information that I had to tell these people when we made that decision before. We've got to, we've got to stand behind these people, these employees, the same as we do have to be responsible to the taxpayers. We have to have people that are doing these jobs for the taxpayers and they're doing them in a responsible, professional way.
I do want to make correction, they're not employees, they're elected.
Either, either way.
That means you're elected, you're not an employee, you're an elected official.
We was, we're into the house, any other county employees, so I think it's fair, you know, I'm not, I don't think I'm speaking out of bounds when I say.
I mean, you know, we, we, we already do a good job of retaining and getting new employees. I mean, every month you, you look at what Jennifer says on birthdays and longevity, there's a lot of, you know, 15, 20-year people in there. We don't, we don't lose very many people at all. If we do, a lot of them come back. You see that on the sheriff's department, dispatchers will come and go. I watch that stuff. So I mean, it's not, we're not lacking in anything that we offer the employees with the county. Nothing, I mean, I'm sorry.
Except when you take the elected official salary into question. In my opinion, I believe we're on the low end of where we should be, just like Jonah was saying. It's been years since they've had an increase to their base salary and I feel like we should do this.
But the question is, how did you come to $4,000, I think he's with?
Well, I said, I mean, Thor said four to six, so that's why I started at four. I mean, initially I started at six, but I feel at $4,000 plus whatever cost of living increase, that gets us closer to my original number of six, which is $500 a month or $125 a week. Can't retire on that, but it helps.
Okay, any other discussion? Tom wants to move this on, the motion, we need to do it three times. Okay, if we have a motion on the floor, that motion is $4,000 increase for the five elected officials talked and then cost of living, whatever we give on the other.
To be determined later.
Correct?
Correct.
Thor, you're seconded, okay? I think we can clear on this, yeah, Stan? I'll bring the vote.
That's what 85% of the new salary would be with a 3% cost of increase.
It's a pretty good, pretty good increase.
It's four grand.
I'm ca, I'm calling for the vote, okay? Another special, all those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed, say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, got that part of it done? Now we'll talk about the overall increase.
I'll go with the commissioner's recommendation, 3%.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, Tom, second by Nick. I've been interested, okay?
So do I need to clarify that will include everyone, the council, commissioners, all employees, all elected officials? Is that right? Am I saying that correctly?
And then 90,000 that you did for the prosecutor, or something in that, that you did the last meeting? I just want to, you want to add with that on there that I did not get. Okay, well, I just want to make sure that.
Okay, include that in my motion, please.
It's, it don't change them once it's signed. I said we voted on it, they leave it out.
Right.
Oh, okay.
To be clear, because I will have a full call meeting, so I want to make sure I wholly understand one motion.
Okay, and I think if, I'm not part of this motion or this second, but I think that we've run into the weeds before on making sure that we have that purpose in there that this doesn't apply to any mandated salaries by state to be added on to those, that's.
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. Anything, any salary set by the state of Indiana in probation or community corrections or anything like that is not included in this motion. Is that what you mean, Thor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to.
Yep.
I feel like they're every penny on the council from what we go through and study and learn, educate ourselves. I don't, I don't think we should be included in the 3% raise for the commissioners. I think we should stay out, that's just my thing.
Okay.
We had our raise last year.
I think, are we at the discussion point? I think that seven, or 3% is way below where, what we should be looking at. The recommendation from commissioners that you're basing that on, or maybe there's more basis to your motion is very narrow-minded from the perspective of looking at just what they did this year. We've still have fallen behind over the last several years. I think that we need to look at something closer to between a 6% and 7% increase. And I would also like to state at this time that I think that we need to look at that increase and that pool of money to divide it out equally rather than doing a percentage raise among all 207 county employees that we have. Train of thought in, in a lot of these percentage type raises, when we're talking about just cost of living and not performance-based raises, is that every four to five to six years, there should be an across-the-board raise rather than a percentage raise. And we've not done one, I think, in six years. We did one about six years ago where we took the, we took, I think we dedicated a 3% raise and then we took that 3% of what the total number would be and we divided that number by 207 and gave each an employee an equal across-the-board raise. And I think that we should have some serious discussion on looking at it between a 6% and 7% amount and doing it across the board divided by 207 employees that work for the county.
Let me answer a question, are you talking about a month or a percentage?
I mean, I'm really sure.
Or discussion.
Yep. I'm talking about if we decide that we're going to, if we're ready to give, if we've done the funds available to do a 6% increase, and we take that 6% as that number comes up to $50,000, then we take that $50,000 divided by 207 employees and everybody gets the same amount. Because we're not doing performance-based raise, we're doing that, we should cost of living increase. And it's, and it's, everybody sitting in this room is making a different salary, but they're all still paying the same amount for a gallon of gas or a gallon of milk. And, and that, those percentages, when we just go percentages can keep gapping. And everybody in here deserves to get a raise that keeps them with 100%. You can't do that every year, but I think it's fair to do it every five to six years to do that offset.
Nick, you had asked a question. I don't have a 6%, but 5% was five up approximately 516,000 and some change, divided by 207 employees would be roughly $2,493 per employee. 7% was 722,000 and some change, divided by 207 employees would be 3,490.
But it keeps us on track. If we look at the last four years, that we've not performed that well as far as the increases for the five years.
I don't, I don't know where, wow, we got to take benefits and consider a few people. Those benefits don't get any cheaper. They do, when, when we give these raises, our first, when we let people off on, on their PTO time, that cost, we're paying that person. They've earned that, but we're paying them. So our cost on that side goes up too, which is easy to forget. Insurance cost is going up, I don't know what, what, what's it going up this year?
Well, we, we just met with the trustees after the year. We're actually doing very well compared to last year. Plans are around the same. So I, I don't know what the increase will be and they would have projected that, that we won't know until October. But I would anticipate probably a 3% to 5% increase, which, you know, I don't, I don't think we're going to be shocked by anything if we budget it for it. I think we're a good place.
But, but again, there's not a 3% on a large sum.
And the trust fund is very healthy. I don't know the exact amount currently, but somewhere between $100,000 and $1,000,000. We continue to make payments from the trusts when we're able, instead of making those from county general. We've been saving county general for the past two years by budgeting for it out of general, but then replacing that with trust payments and then letting that roll back into county general.
And Jim, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but you know, there comes a time too when, when you can afford to do things you do, but when you can't afford, you don't do them. And I think we're in a healthy.
But if we don't demand them, we, we caught it because they're talking interest rates go down, interest rate goes down, then, then, investment money, two, three years ago, we got less than 200,000. And we got that for several years. So we have to remember that. We've been blessed last year, we're being blessed this year. But if interest rates start going down, then that extra money we had is going to disappear. And then we're talking, the numbers you're talking, can go very quickly.
Yeah, they're talking interest rates going down, but you're talking maybe a quarter of a point, a quarter, if that. So, I mean, if they do a quarter of a point in September, like they're talking, I mean, you still got another four months to where.
CD rates is already dropping.
They, they've gone down a little, yes, they have. However, you know, treasuries are still paying very well. CD rates, even though they have gone down, are the highest they've been in years and Kate can attest to that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You know, so, so.
But that two-year period.
Right, but they, it's going to. Right, but they, it's gonna step down. It's not gonna be, uh, they're paying five and a half percent, and all of a sudden they're paying three percent or two percent or less than that, you know? It's not, it's not gonna be like that. I mean, you know, you've been in banking longer than I've been. You've been, you've been in banking a while, I'm not gonna say it.
So, but I, but it, you have to get in consideration because those are large dollars.
They are, but our employees are important, as they're most, they're most valuable asset. And I'm not gonna be afraid to look at everybody in this room next year, if, if it comes out to be a two thousand eight through two thousand thirteen again, and tell them, you're not getting a raise this year. Because with tough times, some, those tough decisions too. I'm not afraid to make that choice anymore than I am to advocate at this point that we need to take a hold of this opportunity and be generous with what we're offered, we're able to offer as compensation, more so than just, you know, saving for a rainy day forever. There's support when you have to, and there's a point when you need to take care of the employees.
We have a motion on the floor. That was by.
Me.
Tom, and second by.
Me.
Nick?
What's the motion, Nick?
Three percent.
Three percent across the board.
And I would, and I would, again, say that if this doesn't, if this three percent across the board is something, that you may enter a budget on three percent, I would at least tell you, let's, let's have a meaningful discussion about how we distribute that three percent. As far as across-the-board raise, rather than three percent for everybody. I would, I would plead with you to at least have some conversation over that.
We have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Okay. Okay, now we got. Anything else? Anything else to say? Didn't you decide on this yet? That's all we gotta do next, okay? Okay. So we're going back up to the merit ordinance, but has that been taken care of with our?
That been taken care of with my motion, whatever employee? Okay.
So now we're deputies.
Can we talk about the pension first? I feel like that would be important to figure out before we can move on to additional requests.
As far as.
What our plan is for it, instead of commissioners paying it out of there.
I can say that, obviously, I don't know the number because I don't have it in front of me, but the number that was in gate was seven percent for raises, and if we just did three percent, there's gonna be money that's to be put back, but I don't know, I can't figure off the top of my head. So it would be more, we'll be able to. Then it also depends on the deputy as well, so. No, the actual individual lines are.
So are you saying you wanna, Chad, in his emails, that it would probably be between two and three hundred thousand on lit? Do you want to use that money and then the balance come out of County General, or what? Chad, is that what you're thinking, or?
I, I, do you want that decided at a later date? I'm not, sorry, I'm not, that's money coming out of, whether it comes out of later work, comes out of.
With the pension.
Is that determined at a later date, Thor?
I understand that.
Well. So we're talking on the sheriff's department.
So when we find out what the, well, what will be approved, sheriff's department, but to, um, we can enter, sort of, the, 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 or he's paid his, but again, it's not, that's long-term. So I would, I would like for council to start working toward a long-term solution for the sheriff's department, or the mayor, that he's petition to go back to the sheriff's department, but to represent, say, for the sheriff's.
So. Not that separate for today, it's for a longer term, not much.
I guess so, I mean, we can have the council, we can figure it out in a whole cheap lie, but I don't, I, like I said, I don't think, and, and I can confirm that, but the commissioners are, are fine with if we need to another year, that's fine. If we need to five more years, that's fine, but ideally, we wouldn't. Ideally, we'd be working at that.
Maybe we reserve that for subsequent conversation.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, you're.
That, that might be a committee where sheriff, council.
I agree.
Work on that.
Yeah.
Are we at max levy on low? Yeah.
So I think it can be increased, but I don't know the.
What, what amount is?
Well, the, and that is an income tax, that's not part of the levy, that's separate. But no, that percentage is not maxed out.
Not maxed out.
I don't know off the top of my head what.
That's something we should consider, probably at a later date.
That's why I said you made a statement.
Low.
We don't keep the upset of that, right, like that's distributed. So, so if that rate was to rise, then the amount that would go to, like, the city, Clumby City or Southwoodway or Busco, that would rise to that as well.
I believe that I don't know that for.
And there's a percentage distributed to Chair Busco to Southwoodway, the city of Clumby City.
And there's no guarantee, the way I understand that, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no guarantee that we would have control over that increase, right? Or is that wrong?
But that would be a council decision, what the, what the increase would be.
Right, but the, the additional, the additional funds? Are we talking about the, the funds that go to the state, state distributes back to us?
We're talking about income tax, like the county has for the jail. They have that same thing for low it. You can adjust that rate to bring in more revenue, and we're not at the cap, I know that cap is, but another smaller entities within the county also receive a piece of that based on, I don't know if they set that at their own township level, I'm not sure.
I think including, including the town, Larwa. That's, that's something we should consider at a later date.
Okay, Nick?
Wait, yeah, that's fine. Wait a while.
So.
So I don't, there, there you go. Me neither.
Me neither.
Me neither.
Okay, I guess we're on, up these, deputies.
They're taking it down.
Normally, you can manage in Seaton, or.
They will vote that.
Yeah. I want to add with that.
I'm just thinking about it. Hold off on all the.
You guys, you. So, let's, next is, although we're gonna do a number of deputies. Open for discussion.
I think I'm, have a feeling like the rest of the council or part of the council that, I would do one till we get that new correctional facility opened up and see where you stand on personnel then. That's where I'm at.
You said that's not gonna affect your number though, right? Once you get in the new jail, three's three?
This has nothing to do with the jail, though.
Two separate, doesn't it?
That's what I mean.
What's that? Sorry, John.
Two separate issues.
Correct.
You gotta look at it as personnel.
Right, but his question was, is gonna.
I don't care what building, you just gotta look at personnel. You move down there, you're gonna need more jailers?
We're not supposed to. We're not increasing the inmate. I think there's a big unknown, that's why, and like with Kim and Nick, it's, it's the total personnel, not if it's gonna be a road man or if it's gonna be a jailer, who, one deputy or one person, then we'll see where we're at when a jail opens up and what goes on. That's my opinion. Just going.
Again, this is public safety. You know, we're. We have a certain responsibility, we're not experts on this, so we're gonna need to listen to our sheriff and, and his people and what they're requesting and what their needs are. We're in a position where we can afford it, it's hard for me to say no, because there's gonna be times when the answer's gonna be no, and people are gonna be working additional shifts. I, I just can't wrap my head around how you can be sure of deputies to go from an eight-hour shift to a twelve-hour shift. I have, I can't put my head around why you need more people.
Because we take more people off the road working crimes we do today, plus the call numbers are up. And also, the days of us working one or two people to a shift need to stop. It's not safe. So if we get a crash in Busco, I got one guy on by the next hour, hour and a half, three hundred and sixty square. So then, when I get asked where, why it took so long, or somebody's needs something, it's because we have probably two people to crash, or maybe we have two people to fight and only one person has to become central. But the balance is what we have to do of the whole county. It's just not that we have, oh, we have people to cover it, it's the calls that we get. And are there calls every, you know, we might have three guys on, and it might be Friday night, it can be the slowest thing in the world. You come to Tuesday night on second shift, you may not, you may drive two hundred and thirty miles that night. You just never know. And the unknown is the worst thing about police work. You don't know what you're gonna do. When you call on, you might drive around and not have a thing, or you might run your butt off. But the biggest thing is being, having somebody available to respond, and the type of calls that we have, and the manpower and the safety of those people that were sent into these calls. And that's the biggest two things, but it's very difficult anymore, the people traveling down these roads aren't the same people that have been traveling down these roads twenty years ago, and the rate of dealing with our mental illness and trying to take care of them. The mental health aspect of our calls are through the road. Now, they have helped us out on that, where we're picked a little bit quicker with the forty-eight statute came out, we've worked well with the judges, prosecutors, and everybody else trying to get that done, and that's helped, but it's not reduced anything. The problem that we have on our mental, our, our, our mental illness calls is dealing and billing report at the time call. Because that's the worst thing you can do, except bad report when you show up to somebody that's, is mentally ill or mentally challenged, and lose that trust of that person, because it's a downless life in there. And so, and some of these people are just, they're residents, they're children, they're vets, I mean, you don't know what you're getting into and, and what that, what that trauma is to that person, so. Who's the biggest goal?
I one hundred percent agree with what Thor said and what our sheriff is saying. If we have the money to, we have the money to do this, I think we should. It's public safety, it's safety for our officers, it's response times, like he was saying, I've never worn a badge, and I, I can't speak to that lifestyle, but I know you can. And I feel like as a matter of experience, and John, sorry, as a matter of experience from these two gentlemen up here, and those of you sitting out there that wear the badge and put your lives on the line every day, if they're making a serious request, I feel we need to make a serious attempt at doing whatever we can to make it possible. Again, that's an emotional response, but if we have the money and it's unallocated and we can do it, I think we should.
Do you have any funding available in your department?
You know, I'm gonna tell you now right now, because we're paying out low, we, we're based on the tax.
Because I'm trying to, we're gonna come up, because we'll have to buy three cars, right?
Yeah.
And then, um, on your eighteen thirty, I'm looking at the new deputy, the yellow highlighted on the sheet, it says hours worked eighteen thirty a year.
Eighteen thirty a year, that's our four-two schedule.
Right, so that's thirty-five hours a week, right?
Thirty-seven and a half one week. Your short, your short week's thirty, your long week's thirty-seven-five. You work four-two.
So, you know, would you have any personnel that would want to increase their hours?
Then you're paying overtime.
Well, you're done.
You're not.
On the long weeks, you are.
On what?
On the long weeks, you are.
Well, you have that scheduling.
With what?
That would be scheduling, I'm just asking, I'm not saying that you do that.
Well, yeah, you can't really pick and choose, I mean, you kinda gotta stick with a schedule because you're doing a partnership. So you go bouncing and pulling, pulling, robbing from here to down to here, then what are you doing to this shift? And then, are you gonna work, we get weekends every six weeks, so nobody's gonna wanna come in and sacrifice a weekend on a short week when they're not compensated, they're getting straight time. So that short week that falls, that you don't work at Sunday, and you're working that sixty hours, work at, uh, I'm sorry, sixty-seven-five.
Well, the reason why I thought of it was because you said a lot of the guys go and work for the other, other areas, Southwoodley and Chair Busco. So I just thought, well, if they're working there, why, why wouldn't they wanna do?
Because they'll just pick up a shift here and there, they're not gonna work like an extra shift a week.
All right.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, it did, I know, because I didn't know what your weekly schedules.
And I, I like, I work for Busco part-time, I maybe work five shifts a year.
Okay.
So I'm not working a shift a week or anything like that.
Thank you. So we have to come up with money for the car.
Is it possible to pay for the cars out of some of the investments that we've done this year?
So, uniform line, we're gonna be, uniform line, we should be good, we've already said, I mean, that's good, so that's a uniform line. You got your firearms license with perpetual, which is already in there for firearms. So that's not considered. The car would be the biggest concern, but we also have to take care of that. Yeah.
They're not taking money from Kay, we're taking it from County General. Kay's just making it for us. Just relax, Kay. We're giving you less capital to work with.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we're making. If, if we're, if we're generating the kind of additional revenue off of county funds because of the investments that Kay is making, why not? If we have the money to add the additional officers, why not use the additional funds from these investments, purchase the cars for the officers? Because eventually, that money, those monies will come back into general, County General at some point, right? Okay, so, yeah.
Monthly, we were seeing it.
So if you've increased your expenses, you got this extra money, and that extra money goes away, and you still, because, because you add these people, whether it's this department or other department, and that just extra expense, that's not gonna go away.
Right.
It's always gonna be a strike. So if your revenue drops, and your expenses keep going up, and that's where, that's where the county got to buy in years. That's what you gotta watch.
And that's up to commissioners and council to be diligent on, just like we're doing, on the additional officers requested, additional cars that need to be purchased, per, benefits, all that kind of stuff. benefits, all that kind of stuff. However, we're not there yet. And instead of spending $120,000 on a dilapidated museum. I also, yeah, I mean, it's, it is what it is. I know it's a sore spot for a lot of people and it's, it's, it's a a landmark within Woodley County. However, there are other things that need to be addressed other than a museum.
His name's Nick.
You see Zero? Kidding, I'm not going to do that. No, I mean, the, the museum artifacts can be moved wherever. The, the employees in the museum can be housed wherever the artifacts are. Just because the home is the home doesn't mean that's where the museum needs to lie. At some point, I mean, you guys have seen the movie Money Pit, I believe. It's got a Tom Hanks in it. It's a great movie. But
So why aren't you saying the same thing about the courthouse? It is the same thing.
Well, let's raise that.
I mean, at one point we had talked about leasing or selling the museum to a, a nonprofit. I mean, I don't know where that conversation went.
We're going to get off, just pull her back up.
But the point, the point that I'm trying to make is you're spending money, you're putting lipstick on pig, basically. You're, you're spending money on things that don't need to be spent as as highly, I guess, or as much, if that makes sense. And I think it's a, it's an emotional notion that is taking away from other areas that are more pressing, like public safety.
I'd like to make a motion that will allow him to have two new deputies.
Somebody?
Two.
I have a motion by Kim. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Joan, that we add two new deputies. Further discussion? I said one, you said two. What's, what's your thinking on that?
Well, I, I still firmly believe, I want, I want to see once he gets in there if everything's okay. He can always come back and ask for another deputy. But if we do it now, we're stuck. So I'm, I'm trying to meet him halfway. So I went to two.
You just
First time I went to one.
And you just want to go a little bit higher than me? That's all you want? Yeah, I agree. Any further discussion?
I think that Kim's motion is appropriate. And I think that even with what the sheriff and Billy have said as far as this isn't something that you're going to get out and run as far as going to a 12 hour shift anyway. But maybe it's something you could have worked into place and when we get the next deputy, we get your next deputy, whether it's mid-season or next year, then it'll be, it'll be a lot closer then to be able to take off.
And I, I think, you know, this is probably the most involved that our department has been in council because we're trying. I, I guess my thought pattern is let's try and, and let's keep up, like you explained, like let's keep up the times. We don't want to wait till we're behind and they come through. It's just like you guys are on your budget. When you guys get behind, we did Wes, we took that big hit. We don't want to get behind public service. We will at least want to stay up with the trend and what we're doing and be able to cover what we need for our county. And, and I guess I appreciate the impact and the, and the concern that these guys have because it directly affects their lives and their workability. But I also appreciate what you guys have done. We've been back here four or five times, like Jim said. In China, and, and you all have your own beliefs and your, and your own take on things. And we appreciate you guys putting this much thought to it into what we consider our livelihood here. So we do appreciate that.
I appreciate what you said, except for the fact that this is the most involved you've been because I've been on council for almost eight years. And there's been four or five or six of you sitting in that back row to stay, stay close on near every meeting. So your involvement is always here.
Which I I appreciate that you appreciate that.
We have a motion to adding two new deputies to the sheriff's department. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hands. All those opposed, same.
Thank you.
What else to, for your, for your budget?
And I'll make these adjustments.
So then our September meeting.
I, like in the last question, I think at one point there was some discussion Tiffany on you adding stipends to your request for your salary. Is that something that's still open or is that considered denied? Or are you satisfied with the, with the fact that you've got the raise that you've gotten? Or do we need to make a decision on that request yet? Is that still in the proposal? Do we deny that?
I didn't know there was a request.
You didn't make that request?
Yeah, during budget time. And then I think if you're on there considering who wants to take the minutes or do the budget books. And that's where it was asked.
I didn't, I didn't prepare a request for that, so.
Yes, it was a request.
I got, saw an email. That was part of your duties.
That is not part of my duties. I presented you with a letter of what my duties are.
So there is a state statute. Again, this, I mean, like officials do not have jobs or things happening here. And yeah, so it's pretty clear that the honor, so it's the clerk board of the fiscal. That includes minutes of heating.
There are certain minutes, yes, they have to pay.
So I believe firmly in equitable pay, but I believe in, I believe in that. And I don't like, I'm, I'm against stipends. I don't like the stipends. I don't even like the church supplement. Here and now, because those salaries are set by the states and if we're, if we're adding stipends here and supplements there, that takes away what we the greater bond. So I'm, I'm fully supportive and proud of council to make that leave and address those five eleven officials. I'm, I'm very pleased that I have that. But I, I think the statute's very clear about what your duties and responsibilities are.
And I think the state also has known that there's been a lapse and that's why they implemented a $2,500 stipend. That is a lapse. That's why I asked for it.
Yeah, and you know, the statute says that that's something the council can consider.
I think, in my opinion in my opinion is that we've kind of covered that with what we've done as far as that position. Are you satisfied with that?
I will take whatever I can. And I've always said that.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request for that additional, was it 2,000 or 2,500?
2,500.
That we deny the motion or the request for that additional 2,500.
So I have some motion. Is that all right, Thor?
Yes, I pause.
Is there a second? That we deny the doctrine request?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. What else? Anything else? This for your budget. So will we have a public meeting on carrying on first week, September, whatever, the fourth? Anything else you need from us? Okay, comments from the public? So you're all good with everything, with budget? John, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Joan?
Yeah. I can't imagine what our old, more seasoned council people over there. Our more seasoned council personnel has gone through with the past budgets when it was really difficult. Because I found this year difficult. Go on. I appreciate your attention.
I appreciate the workshop type atmosphere. These aren't easy to set, decisions to make, but not easy decisions to make in private, let alone in a public meeting. But everybody's discussion was good. And we did it in a respectful way and we showed we could work together and come to and solve things for the betterment of our great county. So I just appreciate that and how we work together as a
In Pizza Seven.
Yeah, it's going to be here soon.
Nick?
Kay.
I'm good.
James?
I have none.
I have nothing. Thank you.